All right, so welcome tonight to our work session, our 5:30 work session. There wasn't a published agenda for the work session and basically, Mr. Bransoy, one of the items we're going to talk about is the, we're going to discuss the questions from the Bold School Public Hearing on the, that we had last Monday on the proposed closure of Bird Island Elementary School. We're going to discuss some questions and some answers and what else are we?
That'll be the first part of the meeting and then continuing from that, we'll continue with our facility study that we've been working on. Our last work session we had, we had Ryan here to present some information about the moving forward with facilities. And so that's the second part of the, what we have time for, we'll, we'll turn it over to Ryan and he'll, he'll go through some information about different options to look at with the facility. So we'll do that and so that'll take care of the work session.
Okay.
Those two things.
Danny, could you hear Dale when he spoke? You can just give me a thumbs up? Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. All right, so moving on, Mr. Bransoy sent us the questions and the answers that they worked on. Dale, do you want to present this or should I?
I sent you a list of questions and this was a summary of what was at the hearing. We go tonight, that we have a public hearing and that's part of the process of closing a facility. And so the questions that were generated at the meeting were summarized here and some of the responses and I think you sent this out on Friday for you to have a chance to go through it. And tonight is a time when you'll discuss it. So I, I think we'll take, should take the time and look at each one of the bold parts, questions and you can read to it. I'm not going to read word for word, but we'll teach us the topic. And you've got the summary and maybe we can take a look at that and, and see what the response was. So if that's okay with everybody, we can move forward with that. First question was, given the board broad consensus among public health experts and states officials, health officials for restricting indoor capacity and maintaining social distancing, why won't the school district use part of the elementary school building to serve more students? And the responses from this and what we thought of is that as we navigate the COVID pandemic, the building has the adequate space needed to maintain all the health and safety protocols. And that's what we're following currently in the building. The principals are working with their staff very close with that and, and so I think we've been able to keep it out of the building so far. That's, that's, that's good. Then operating two facilities would consume operational dollars that can be used for additional supplies needed to properly clean our spaces and protect our students and staff. And there's a lot of that extra cleaning that's going on in materials. And so that's free and that exists. Most elementary school classrooms have little or no ventilation, which contributes to overall poor air quality. Lowering class sizes, spreading students out in two facilities would require additional staff and that we do not have and we are very, very difficult to find during this time. And that's something that we're, we're, we're sharing. We'll talk more about it when we get to facilities on our agenda is, but is staffing. We've been advertising for two care professionals for about two weeks now and we have not had any applicants. And so that's kind of what we've run into. So that's question number one. Questions and thoughts there?
When you say most elementary school classrooms have little or no ventilation, which contributes to overall air quality, you mean the classrooms in Bird Island, right?
The Bird Island site, yes. And that's something we've talked, I've met with the, the EA from Bird Island at different times now and they've been working with a committee and that's something we've, that's been brought out. Is the lack of ventilation in that building and there is very little movement of air. And so that's something that, that we're concerned about.
Is there anything else anybody thinks? I mean, just, you know, I was just thinking about like, is there anything else anyone might like to see added or just something that? Just making sure there's enough there.
Yeah, next question is we heard that there is no room for mental health care professionals and such with the Olivia site. There's some, there's some truth to this and this is something that we've looked administratively and the staff wise is biggest hurdle we have or the difficult part is, is office spaces, low areas. And so the classroom, we were able to fit well. And so we've been working on, on getting options for all the specialists we have. And so we did the clarion area now and office space is down the hall where the care professionals can come in and work with the Woodland reps will be here now and they haven't been in the building this fall yet.
No, they were in today.
Pardon?
They were in today and we do have office.
Today was the first day they'd been in the office. When they, when we first came back, Woodland said that they were not going to be in person. And so as time got going and I think the need is there and so now, and Jim, you haven't had any communications with Woodland or what?
I have not, no, I have not had any communications directly with them, but Tom Cruz has.
Tom is the one that facilitates that and so is working with Woodland.
I don't, I don't know if this was said, but they do have a dedicated office now.
Yes, yeah, so. So that's all taken care of. And how can a school building be closed for initial purposes, but the gymnasium can still be used for sporting and other events? The gym has its own HVAC system, which ensures a proper ventilation in that space. And we continue to test the air quality and this was just done about two weeks ago. We had IEA and then they tested that area to the gym and the hallways where the classrooms and the air quality is, is in fact, Aaron shared that air quality in, in the gymnasium was better than air quality outside. So it's, but we'll monitor that and that's not where the issue is, we're in the building. And so, so that, that is not an issue. And I don't know if you want to respond, Ryan, Danny, of that part of it and you're, you're an expert in that area?
Yeah, I think one of the main factors too, when you consider the health concerns is the duration of time people are in a single space with people. And I don't know what the schedule is of, of events or, or sporting events that are happening there, but I'm assuming they're, they're more confined or restricted time slots, maybe a practice for an hour or a game for two hours as opposed to an eight hour day. So trying to keep that time limited is good too, which helps in that instance.
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Are we collecting data from any of the other rooms on the west side of the building, that new wing? Or just in the gym?
I believe that, I'm not certain, John. I'd have to check on that, but I, I thought I asked them to check that area of the, of the building. That's the newer part?
Yes.
Yes, so I, I think I would have, you know, that, their air movement is much better there than it is in, in the other part of the old building.
Okay, I'm just going to backtrack to first question. And it talks about bullet D, lower class size and spreading students out as, that can be a positive thing as well because it allows for the students to have more creative space and also allows for social distancing either. I'm just saying that, that there's that kind of, that situation. It has some pluses and it has some negatives.
And that's right. And you can, and that's what we're trying to look at now. And the principals are going to address this in our, our board meeting. But social distancing is one of the key things. And what we're trying to do is with the facility, we've got spacing the students 60. And Brett with the elementary has been working on that the whole last week and continuing to work on it because we hope we can keep our elementary as long as we can. And if we can get that spacing, then we feel we can do that. And so masking and spacing, two big issues. And so that's a focus that we have right now. So along with lower class sizes and if you're going to create more classes, that means more staff. And that's the issue. That's more of an issue than anything right now is we, we're advertising for, for support personnel and we're not getting any, anybody reacting. That right now is a big, big concern we have. And so in order to make split classes, then we need to have more staff.
But that wouldn't be the only reason to close a building.
No, I'm not saying that.
But then spreading them out over two facilities without having the adequate staff and then you're going to need, you know, you're going to need your kitchen staff over there and your custo, I mean, it, it's just going to keep snowballing into more and more. You might have to come out of retirement, John.
Sure.
But I think you can talk with the principals right now and then they've got adequate space. So if they can do that, that's what they're doing. In the high school, they've got the hybrid, so they've got half of those groups in here. So that allows that spacing. So what we need to look at is spacing in the elementary. And largest class, Brett, is how many students?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? You got one class of twenty-three. Otherwise, there are less than that. And they can space their desks out in their classrooms that can hold that number of students. So.
Well, I got a question. Let's just say tomorrow we go back to regular school and everybody's in the building. Is that going to be a problem?
For, depends on what guidelines you're going to go by, by the CDC?
Well, let's just say we're back to school.
Pretend like this is back to normal.
Everything's back to normal.
That'd be great. That's what we were at the start of the school year. We were at that.
Right, but I'm asking, if let's say tomorrow, everything, they said, let's go, everything is good. Do we right now have the complete spacing in this building to fill everybody up?
Yeah.
But to be at, to go back, so to go back to the green or to phase one, you don't have to have that spacing either.
Okay, but I'm just saying, bringing them over here, at first they were all stuck in here and then we made some rearrangements. I'm just asking if, if they didn't have to do the social distancing and everything else, would we be okay?
When we started, yeah, when we started this school year out, we were all in here. We were all, everybody together.
Right.
Where we started. And we went the first two weeks like that and it was excellent.
Okay, so it did work good.
Yeah, and, and I think that was a real, what we were excited about was getting all the students in the building and seeing that. And, and I think that was a good start. Including, I think, bringing the high school in together that first week or two. I think really set the, the tempo for the year and it started us off on the right foot. That's something we didn't have a chance to do last spring when we had to go distance immediately. And that really was hard. It's hard on the students, it's hard on the staff. We didn't know where we were going. In those first two weeks, we were able to, the staff was able to work with the students and say, this is the expectations. And so that's where we're at right now. We'll talk more about that at a board meeting too, but yeah. We were in that position the first two weeks of school and it went well. And another question is if the school-owned building in Bird Island is closed, how will the school keep the building from deteriorating further so that it can be used for future assets to the community? This reaction there is a district to continue to minimal operate and maintain the building. We're keeping the borders running and performing leak repairs for the best way to maintain the stability. And the district has also met the Bird Island EDA exploratory committee, which has been generous enough to provide some support for minor maintenance of the facility. And it's been, I've been at a few meetings with that group and they're really working hard and putting together a plan. And so we'll talk more about that too. Once a final decision is made to use the building, by the school board, a plan that's long-term use be developed. So long-term planning will include various groups, including the city of Bird Island, the Bird Island EDA and the business of Bird Island and others. And that's what we're working with right now. Last Wednesday, we had a two and a half hour Zoom meeting with, with the exploratory committee that was formed by the EDA of Bird Island. And it was really a positive, they're really brainstorming some ideas, some suggestions of what, what we could put, what they could put together for that building. And so it's really, really been some good meanings. I've been involved with two or three of them now. This last one, they had Engins, Barbara was there, March, and then Richard Ingram presented and facilitated the meeting. And so Richard right now is putting together some designs, some options. And with it, so, so they're moving forward with it. Their focus is that, let's look at the future and what is in the future. And so that's what they're really focusing on. And I think reality is there with that group and and they're doing a real fantastic job. And I think it's good to get Barbara involved and Richard and get some expertise and, and work at seeing what can that building, how we can utilize to be a positive for the community. That's, that's what the goal is.
So one question that I have, you know, obviously depending on what happens with the Brown building, let's say another group does something with that, it obviously is our plan right now to continue to use this gym. What if that's not an option? Will we, how would that get handled if we don't have that gym at some point?
I think, you know, the-
Can we get by with what we have here?
I think if you didn't have it, you'd probably be forced to do that. And I don't think Derek wants to really provide that, be in that type of a situation. Any time that has come out of that committee has looked at the district is leasing the gym. And so I think that will continue and I think they're looking at ways and Ryan, I don't know if you want to share anything here about, you know, separating the, the old part and the newer part as far as the heating and that type of, I don't know.
It's, it's, this, this process is difficult because there's iterations to it. The first step is deciding that you're not going to use that building, right? Then you can decide what to do with it. So it's, it's tough to separate those two components. It feels like if you choose as a board to close Bird Island for school purposes, that it's gone tomorrow. That just opens the door then with how do you use that building from that point forward? And then timeframes can be established with it. So the typical process would be you close, you, you are approving to close the building, you then can put out an RFP for anybody to respond to, to give their responses on what they will use the building for. You don't have to do that. You can do that. You can get responses back and part of that, part of that process, when you issue the RFP, which is a request for proposal, when you issue that, you can put stipulations in there to say, you can respond to this RFP telling us what you're going to use with the building. One requirement is, is that the Bold Public School District maintains the ability to schedule activities, events in the gym for a duration of time. So you still own the building. You still are, you can determine what happens to it. You can decide to close the building tonight. You could turn around and sell it to a private entity tomorrow. I mean, it could happen that fast, right? But again, you still hold the cards, just like you would in your house, of how you want to control the ownership, the operation of that. So I don't know if that, that makes it any clearer or any simpler. It's this, the, the closure process is independent of what happens to it after.
And I think that's kind of the first step is to move forward, is to, is to what are we going to do with the building? And so I think if you close it tonight, then, then working with that committee, I think that committee is, is their meeting again Wednesday night. And I think they're kind of set weekly meetings up. And so I think they're very energized right now and are looking at what options. Yeah. So, and I know the EDA, their EDA met today and set up some goals for their committee, so it includes moving forward. So I think that's good. I'd like to say it'd be great to get it to be a real asset for the community. That would be the goal. But I think the board has to look at what's best for the entire district. And that's what makes it difficult is you've got one community, but you're, you're working with three. And so you're working with a school district that entails includes all three of the communities and all the properties. So I think we need to look at that is keep the focus on, on our 630, 40 kids and staff.
Hey, I got a question. This is for Ryan or Dale. I don't care which. What would it cost us if we say we sold, we put the building up for sale, what would it cost us to have it good enough for sale?
That's, that's, yeah, it's a, that, there's not a specific answer to that, Jeff, unfortunately. You can just, again, you can determine what you're going to do to the building to make it more attractive to a buyer. You can weigh that against the cost in which you would incur to do that. So you can sell the building as is and see what people do to, to buy it. You might get nobody interested in it because there's a substantial cost to get the hazardous materials out of it, right? So typically districts would, would at least perform that part, remove all hazardous materials. Well, that leaves the building in a, in a pseudo demolition state, right? Because you're opening walls, you're, you're, you're accessing pipes and things like that to take them out because they're hazardous. So then do you leave the building in that state or do you patch those holes back up? And so, so there's, there's, it's not a simple answer, unfortunately. It's maybe the shortest answer. But either way, if, if you were to want to remove all those hazardous materials, that's, that's a substantial cost. Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So if we didn't want, if we didn't want to, the people buying it would have to assume that cost?
They would, they would have to assume that cost and that responsibility. Yep. And depending on what they're going to use the building for, they may have to do something with it, they may not. If a government entity takes ownership of that building, that government entity, I'm going to speculate, is going to have to do what you didn't do. So you're, you're transferring that cost to them, which may, that's fine, but that might make it not very attractive.
So how would that abatement work for in this situation?
I guess, maybe I'm not following the question. You go in there and just tear it out.
So the bait, when they talk about abatement, explain that to me.
So there's, there's different types of abatement. Abatement is most associated with asbestos, right? You heard that term. Asbestos is a material or is a, is a fiber that's used in all sorts of different building materials. So it's in insulation, it's in floor tile, it's in pipe coverings, it's in ceiling tile, it's in glue. So it, it's everywhere. It's a great material, just not so good for humans. So any of those surfaces that have that would have to be cleaned, removed, demolished, however you want to term it, out of the building to give them a clean building. There's other types of materials, lead, mercury, and things like that, that I'm sure that there's little bits of that in that building in places. I don't, I haven't combed over the IEA report, but that wouldn't surprise me. Lead paint was pretty popular back in the, you know, really, really times of that building. That might be covered up by layers of paint now that don't have lead, but. And the severity in the abatement is different. Asbestos is, is much more restrictive on how you get rid of it in the process to do it. Removing lead paint is a little less easier, but you still have a process you have to go to. Mercury, there probably isn't a whole lot of mercury in there, maybe in some thermostat and things like that. So it's more of a onesie, twosie item type to, to take out of there. But yeah, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of different items. I can't remember off the top of my head if you have an old fuel tank downstairs that might have some more fuel. That would be considered, how, just things like that. So.
So realistically, that $500,000 that we were going to, I think it was 500 on that sheet that you had.
Six hundred.
Six hundred. To get rid of, demolish the building. Basically, we have to pay $600,000, $600,000 to get rid of the whole thing. Or $300,000 to $400,000 before we sell it to pay that to get rid of the other.
Yeah.
So essentially, it could be part of the referendum.
Right now, I'm carrying it as part of the referendum. Yep.
But you, you don't, if you built that building up for sale, it doesn't say you have to do those.
Yeah, you, again, the RFP process, you can say the building contains, and IEA has it, what they call a survey, a hazardous material survey. So you could attach that survey to the RFP and say, the building contains the attached survey. And then the people know, okay, this is what I'm getting into. So the, the problem with a government entity versus a private party that's buying it, now the government entity, if it above it, the building's going to be used for the public. Now they're going to fall back right into where the position you guys are in of saying, okay, this has to be done, this has to be done, this has to be done. If they, if they do anything to it at all, right? They, they could just take the building and say, let's have people go use it. Obviously, I wouldn't recommend that, but good, but that's, if they started the process to renovate, now they're in the same snowball effect that you guys are in of how they do that.
So you, having gone through that numerous times, you obviously know what we got over there. How much are you looking, thinking we're looking at for that piece of it?
For the abatement part? I, yeah, that's, that's, you're probably right. Right around probably $300,000 was the abatement part. It makes it easy when you do the whole building. Because when you, when you do asbestos abatement and certain types of asbestos and things like that, you have to, you have to contain those areas and have positive airflow and machines that filter the air and do all that stuff. When you're doing the building as a whole, at least you can just shut the building off, right? You're not, you're not setting up all those different barriers and containment areas onesie, twosie throughout the building, which makes it more difficult or costly. In a whole building, you can just poly off all the exterior openings and now your building becomes that big bubble that you're, you're containing. So if there's a little efficiency there, you can kind of just go at it, if you will.
I know that was one of the things that they talked about at the EDA meeting was possibly putting in some of that dollar in the referendum. So that, that is a positive.
Yeah, the, the next part of this conversation, and we're kind of getting into it. You can, as a board, again, after the decision to close the building, you can decide what, if anything, is included in a referendum to take care of that building.
Sure.
The, the sticking point becomes people have to vote to approve it, right? So you can say, we'll spend a million dollars on that building to clean it, make it, change the windows, do whatever, and then sell it. Everybody in your district has to agree with you that that was the best decision that, that should, to be put in our front.
But the goal, and I go back to this, the goal is to sell the building as is.
If you're, if you're asking me what my business decision goal would be, would be to, to get rid of that building as cost effective as possible?
Yes. And that's what I mean. That's what I'm saying is that if you put it up for sale, then you can make that decision.
Right.
Can you sell it as is? The owner takes it as is. It's just like you sell your home.
Yep.
You know, you can put 15 dollars into that home prior and get it ready for sale, or you can say, there it is. And so you have that option.
If you, if you spend- If you if you spend six hundred thousand dollars to abate it and demo it, is the land it's sitting on worth six hundred thousand dollars, so maybe you break even. Or can you maybe find somebody to take it as is for a dollar and you break even? That would be the. That's a win in my book.
Is that RFP adjustable, I mean, like, we can make a decision to sell it, is?
Yeah, we, the board decides what's included in that.
The timeframe on that.
We can have, you could start that now, you could start that in the spring, you could. You can take it for six months to have it open, you could take it for two weeks to have it open, but you set the rules. You can restrict, a lot of districts with school buildings that they're they're taking out of their inventory, restrict that anybody buys it. Does not have education as part of their use of that building. They don't, you know, with charter schools and 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 competing academics, that's something typically you don't want. But again, you don't have to do that.
So I think that's a process you go through when you decide if you're going to close it, then what are you going to do? And and I think that, like Ryan said, the best and the quickest way is to sell. And if you can sell it as is to a buyer, if you got a buyer, then, and that's been, that's happened. I know it has. And. And so the buyer buys it as is and then they do what they want with the building. And so you have, that can be an option, you don't know. Right now, Ryan has got four hundred thousand for demolition or whatever. I think that's what we're looking at. In the in a bond, well, it could be more or less.
Yeah, that that's where the conversation comes, and and it's good to have the conversation with the Bird Island EDA. That's that's fruitful, that that's good, that's that's what you want. That to understand what's out there and 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 everybody that could potentially take advantage and 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 gain some things out of this. Is it more attractive to to? Demo all of it, leave the the gym standing and have somebody else buy it then, and you guys? Lease the gym back, that's, you can do that. To me, the the simple, again, the business kind of aspect of this is operating two facilities for you as a district just isn't. You're not set up to do that, and even your operating levy that you passed last fall was in preparation for getting to one facility. So that's, that was the purpose behind that.
I know the committee, when they met, the last time they met, that's, they talked about different options for the building. And they talked of leasing parks, you know, the businesses or or arts groups and and. Of buying products or investing in it, I guess. And so. That's what they're looking at, there's a lot of options there, and they they're brainstorming things and putting thoughts together. So I think that's a real positive. I think they've really been upbeat, they've been lots of questions. And they've been moving forward, so that's good.
There there has to be something included in the referendum. The Department of Education will not allow you to close the building and not have a plan for it. So. We can't just put it away and decide later. That's going to be part of the the review and comment that we've been talking a lot about. The Department of Education wants to know you plan that out. And that's why, worst case scenario, we have the demolition of it, because then it then it's a clean site. That's not a hazard to anybody that's not going to drain. Operational dollars down the road for any unknown reason. That's that's kind of the lowest end of the totem pole we can go to. We can add money to it to fix it, to sell it, that, sure. Again, you're asking the community of bold to support that. Which could happen, I I don't want to.
Does that happen? I mean, is that common, not really?
I I think. It would, I guess we haven't seen too much of it in this kind of situation, you know? Having a a building transition into a community center or a. Long-term housing or long-term care facility, things like that, yeah, we see that and and adding some dollars to to. Help boost that along, sure. I don't know if any of those really come into play here, maybe they do. The 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 great thing you have with a with a potential hospital partnership. Kind of takes away some of those potentials of of that building to have duplicates within the district to pay for out of the case with the referendum. So, you know, it's it's an awesome end result for for new facility. And restricts maybe that, what you'd include for that building, you know?
So there's lots of options, and so I think that's what this committee is is really researching and really looking at. And the high school that I graduated from closed in nineteen seventy nine. At that time, they, we merged with the, consolidated with another school district neighboring. And this, then they sat with the building, they said, what are we going to do? The community took the gym over and and the Columbia and the old. Session stands area and that, and then a private investigator, investigative. Came in, bought the rest of it and made apartments out of it. And my mother even lived in my, in this third grade classroom. For a number of years, and that's what they did, and. And on a side note, the. The community storm came through and it took part of the roof off the gym. And they had a lot of water damage, and so they had it insured, and insurance paid for a brand new floor, new stage curtains, the whole. They got a beautiful facility right now that the insurance took care of, so, you know. Those are options that are. And so.
What you see the transition in a lot of districts happen is those old buildings become the district office. That the district office moves into the areas that aren't suitable for for education. Those typically have a substantial office setup, amount of people, operations, all that good stuff. To operate that building for a superintendent, a business manager and and some support staff. Yeah, and and they do that in in hopes of, okay, maybe we'll hold on to that building because maybe our enrollment dipped and that's why we don't need the building anymore for right now. Maybe our enrollment will come back and we'll need that building. I don't know if the demographics show that that's anything that we should consider at this point, that we're going to need. That space for hundreds, hundreds of students to to backfill, so it just doesn't, that typical process doesn't seem to play here.
Yeah, let's look at the next question. Why is there a rush to formally close a school building in Bird Island? What is the benefit to the school district slash students? Since all students are already in Olivia campus, it appears that the decision had already been made to close the Bird Island campus, and this hearing is just a formality. And some points there is a decision to close the building will allow us to start the process determined its next use. The longer the building stays in limbo, the more of a deteriorating possibility of using any existing parts of it vastly decreases. Understand the community's concerns, we have used this building for many years. But put it, put it a different way, we have a delay having a discussion about the future of our buildings long enough that the problems have come, have become urgent. Closing the Bird Island Elementary will improve operational efficiency and help stabilize our finances. As we have already seen this year, having all of our students under one roof benefits students, reduces costs and increases conveniences for staff and parents. Any comments on? On that, I think it's pretty straightforward. Then the next item is what is the plan if the school board, school bond referendum fails? Will all students continue to attend Olivia campus building? Will the gymnasium in the Bird Island building continue to be used? The decision is to close Bird Island Elementary School is independent from the potential referendum project. Whether or not the district seeks a new facility or some other long-term plan for students, the cost to repair the elementary, the excess space and the operational budget. The district pays dark too much to consider for future use. Right now, our school board is focused on creating the best long-term facilities plan for our district. If we put forward a referendum in the spring of twenty twenty one and voters decide not to approve it. They will most likely continue the way we are operating now with all students in at Olivia campus. Till taxpayers approve a long-term plan, this is the most efficient and fiscally responsible option for our district. Further, we have stayed our enrollment projections, our district is similar to many other boroughs, and then we can operate efficiently with one building. For now, the elementary school gym will continue to be used for activities such as high school varsity basketball practice. Going forward, there are many opportunities to be considered for a long-term use of the building for other things outside of the whole public school. Any questions or thoughts? Is there a less expensive option, say ten million? Any option that does not fully repair the building would be irresponsible and allow the deterioration of the facility to continue. One of the reasons a district is in such a difficult position is a mindset of seeking the cheapest. Fix possible instead of property addressing building needs and planning for the future. It is the administration's school board's job to provide the best curriculum, staff, and facilities feasible while maintaining the budgets supported by taxpayers. So you can continue moving down the road that we've been through. And is that the road you want to be in? Yeah.
We need to keep moving, because.
Yeah.
What happens?
Sorry.
To the rookie dollar budget in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty? Going to rookie projects and all the facility projects are all, initially, school buildings go well beyond. Roof repairs and regular maintenance, the assessment of the hundred-year-old building identifies. Facility identifies approximately thirty-four point eight million in necessary updates regarding your question. Your FY nineteen, it was fifty-two thousand, who spent on repairs of the Bird Island building, roof, and seventy-five thousand was spent on the Olivia building. Roof repair and maintenance is part of the long-term facility maintenance budget. We have a long-term budget, facility budget, and that includes all the things that are involved with maintenance. And it's only about two hundred and fifty thousand. A year, and so, and we know what means and stakes if that's not going to.
Hey Danny, what did we all do to the gym over there this last summer? What kind of maintenance did we do on the gym?
We had to have the basketball hoops and every working mechanism on the hoops. We had to have them inspect inspected.
That was it, that's all we did over there this year?
It was, that was pretty much all we did over there this summer. And if you look at the bill, it was probably enough.
What about the floor, Danny?
The floor was done in the Olivia gym, and then we redid the floor over there, yes.
Yeah.
As far as the gym floor, yes.
Yeah, so gym floors was.
We do that every year, so I mean, that's.
That's maintenance.
Right.
Can we try the BLHS? That's a question we have often here, and I have, I've talked to different. People out to BLHS multiple times over the years. And I mentioned one of my meetings, I've been the third superintendent that I've talked with over there now, and so. These are, though, through these conversations, there's not been any mutual beneficial path that either district wishes to pursue at the time. Ultimately, we control our own destiny and feel we should not give, give that up. Further exploration of the poll of the joint district between Bull and BLHS has no bearing on the closure of the Bird Island Elementary School. Impressed on the BLHS issue, it may, we, it may be thought that because both districts have significant facility issues. Sharing the cost of a new facility will lessen the impact on the individual taxpayer. That isn't necessarily true. The increased size of a new facility or most likely two facilities, one in each community, may lessen the impact on the taxpayers. The consolidation districts is complicated when it comes to taxes. The obligations that we and the BLHS have in terms of debt, approval levies do not go away in consolidation. We have a similar tax base, heavy agriculture and limited commercial. So we can anticipate that tax rates would not change significantly either way. How does the Ag2 school work? The Ag2 school tax credit reduces the property tax impact of school debt levies for owners of agricultural land. This is a tax credit available to agricultural land. Except the value of the house, garage, and one acre of land surrounding the agricultural homestead. The Ag2 school program provides a fifty percent tax credit for qualifying property in twenty twenty. And is scheduled to increase to seventy percent by twenty twenty-three. The district pursues making major investments in its buildings that agricultural credit from from the state would pay for more than half of the cost of a new facility. There've been a lot of questions on the the Ag2 school tax credit. And I think that when that came in, there was kind of an equalizer between the, for the outstate schools that have a big ag base. An equalizer with the metro. And so that was a really, for outstate schools, that was a big decision to come with, with an equalizer, so. And then a couple of years, it'll be up to the seventy percent, it's supposed to increase each year up to that point. And that's on the ag land. And the makeup is not local. The balance of that tax benefit comes from the state, it comes from their general. And so, some people have said, well, then, the balance that comes off of that is distributed with other homeowners, and that's not true. So what I have, to spend seventeen point eight million on Olivia's building can be done. Long, long-range plan for Olivia building and other options for the district will continue to be explored. The final determination of the Olivia building does not alter the need to close Bird Island Elementary. Spending seventeen point eight million tax credit dollars only cover basic infrastructure repairs such as HVAC, ports, roofs, windows, and walls. And would not address any educational improvement. We believe that the residents want us to pick the plan that provides the best value for our district and our communities. Why did school board approve the K four move from Bird Island element but not the five two six? In order to temporarily close the building, the school board is required to vote and approve that action. Shifting location students is not a school board approval or action item, but an administrative one. And that question's going to ask also, and so that kind of answers that. Last question there is, why get rid of the bigger space available to Bird Island Elementary, locker rooms? And concessions, gym, those spaces need to be repaired as well. One issue facing the district is excess space, not lack of it. So while having bigger spaces available at Bird Island is is nice, it is still not the best option for our district at this time. So quite a list, a lot of things came out of that meeting, I think, it was a good meeting.
Anything anyone thinks didn't get answered?
Yes. The question of tax erosion. That was brought up in that meeting, what was, what's the answer for that?
Yeah, tax erosion is, again, it's a, it's a complicated answer, and I'm surprised that's not on here, I do remember that question, but. I believe, and I'm going to have to put words into the gentleman's mouth, that what he's assuming is that the tax base goes away, right? If a, if a. If the thought is that the the school leaves Bird Island and therefore tax values drop. That's different than tax erosion. Property value decreasing is different than tax erosion, which means it goes away, right? So what would happen is property values would have to decrease to such a degree that people then just abandon their properties and then all of a sudden they just be. and then all of a sudden they just be turned back over to the city or the state, whoever wants to have, now have them. Would that happen in this scenario where you have a bunch of homeowners or businesses that own their buildings that they're in or homes? And they get foreclosed on and the banks now own them? And then the banks at some point choose to let them go. That's a, it's a very long iterative process to create tax erosion. That's, that's reducing your tax base. The more, I think, probably more what he's, was angling at was the, the tax values. If you don't have a school, maybe tax values drop for homes and or businesses, which is a potential. I suppose, i- in any case, if you were to approve a referendum and tax values drop, as long as they're dropping equally, means all the tax values in the city drop the same, what people pay for the referendum state. So it's, it's not a, they drop, oh, so now we have to pay more. It's based on a percentage of the total value of what you're, you're paying your school taxes. So, again, it's, it's a lot of accounting, but the tax erosion concern is, is something I think is, is much more difficult to expect that would happen where, where the tax base just goes away because nobody now owns the land or owns anything in Bird Island or around it, right? So, is it possible? I suppose it is possible. I, I, I don't have firsthand knowledge of, of that type of thing. And I think that's what he's giving on, but, you know, I talked to Mike a little bit, and Mike might be able to.
He's, he is on.
Actually, maybe he has something to say about that. Put him on the spot there. I did talk to him about that.
No, you answered it. You answered it the way we talked about it. And that, hi all, good evening. And I can, sorry. That, I think, with the way Ryan put it the first time, saying that, hey, if the Bird Island school is taken out of commission, does that mean that property owners are just going to fold up and abandon and foreclose on their properties? That would be a true erosion of the tax base. If you think that by abandoning that facility and property values go down, if everybody goes down commiserately, then that, whatever next step you folks take, will, you'll still bear the burden the same regardless of that school's there or not.
Do you, do you think it was getting at where families, families would move out and that was kind of what the tax erosion meant? When families move out and vacant their houses or who's going to pay the taxes then?
That very, very well could be where the person was angling at it. What we're seeing is that as housing stock or prices go down, actually, younger families that are maybe just getting started have a potential to move in. And it might actually bring revenue into the community because it would add additional pupil units, would generate more dollars. So, it's kind of a catch-22, Jeff. We're, we're seeing it, we're seeing it different ways. I guess, you know, you're on such a main thoroughfare of Highway 212 and have so many options if people are willing to commute or various types of careers or jobs that versus a different place that we might be looking at closing a school. I think you're in a pretty good position to hopefully bypass this tax erosion. I think the, I think if the schools were 20 miles apart, you might have something different happen. But because of the proximity of the location of the two main cities that we're talking about, I don't, I, I just haven't seen it in the consolidations or the closures that we've, that we've been a part of. And I've done six, seven of these.
No, Jeff, I'll take this, maybe not doing enough of the removal work. But Lake Lillian obviously was a community that had a school, that had the school closed. I don't know what Lake Lillian was like before it is today. Did that, did that erode Lake Lillian? Did it stay the same? Did it hurt it for a little while? I guess I'm, I'm asking and not trying to assume.
I think John would be more able to answer that question than anybody.
And that's where, that's where. Yeah, and while John's maybe getting on, that's why I think where Mike was getting at, Lake Lillian is quite a distance geographically. I mean, I guess in, in the wrong terms, it's quite a distance, but for me, it's no problem. But yeah, that, that's much different of a scenario than, than the proximity from what a, the school that's taken out of the inventory to potentially a, a new facility a few miles away from it that might be more attractive and attract people to the towns. So, there's, there's both sides.
Yeah, Lake Lillian is kind of a little bit of a ballgame, I think, in this situation. They lost their school. After they lost their school, they had, they had a couple cafes and now it's down to one backroom cafe. In recent years, the, we've had two churches move out of town or end the relation, the relationship. You just drive down the main street and you see the holes in the street. You'll see that, that that's where a business was at one time. It's no longer there. They've had a hard time bringing anything back. Very hard team. In fact, I think the mini market was bought a few years ago, has been sold about three times since then. So, to me, there's, that's an example of what I think people in the community are, were, are very concerned about. Losing all these little mini things that other people just don't think are important. When it's the only thing you have in your district or in your town, it is very important.
Two of those restaurants were lost to fires. They just didn't.
No, I'm not attacking those restaurants. I'm talking the restaurants on the other side of the street. There used to be two in that side.
Yeah, one of them was lost to a fire though, that little tone place right next to the grocery store. So they've had two restaurants that have been lost to fires in that town.
Well, they may have been lost to fires. I'm just saying they had more. How the fires got started could be a whole nother question, but. Right.
That's not this meeting.
Well, I'll speak for this. I live in Bird Island and the house behind me went up for sale on a Monday. And I know the gentleman that bought the house and it was sold the next day. We can't keep, we can't keep houses on the market there, which is awesome. It's great. I mean, houses are selling. I don't, honestly, I haven't really driven out until much, but I don't know if there's anything that's on the market anymore.
You know, the, the, I don't want to belabor this too much and maybe I'm getting more opinion in this than I should. But to, to understand the argument of tax erosion, if there is no school in the town, would have to be assumed then that the school is drawing people into the town because of it. So, is that, maybe that's the case? Or is it the district that's drawing it? What, you know, to, to say if the, the building goes away, erosion will happen of tax base would be, then would be, if it doesn't go away, it's gaining tax base. I, I don't, I don't know if that makes sense or is, is legitimate, but it's another way to look at it.
I think just to piggyback what you're saying is that I've listened to the exploratory committee talk. They're not talking about erosion. I think they're talking of things that they can bring in there that can add to the community. And I, and I think when I've gotten to know Bird Island and the city of Olivia and stuff, you've got enough businesses here that are strong. Community-minded people. And they're doing, and I think that'll continue. And, and so, I would hope it would. So, by bringing a, continuing with a strong program within driving distance, three, four miles between the communities, I think would really strengthen the area. And Bird Island's part of that area, being that close. And so I think that's what I see that committee looking at. I think they're looking at the future. And I think that's a, a real plus. They're saying, what power can we make it good? And so. And I, go ahead.
If I can add something, Dale, I think you take that one step further and it kind of goes back to the discussion that was happening about quarter to six. Is that, well, what, what could we or could we not do to make this more palatable? Well, you said saleable of the property and I would maybe exchange that word for palatable. And say, well, working with the city leaders and the real estate community, what could you do on that site that would minimize the financial output for that facility? And maximize the potential reuse of that area for something to add to the new tax base, whether that's commercial, whether that's what have you. For instance, if, if it was decided that that space just, just said that, that in the referendum, we put a taxable portion in knowing that you'd sell it to somebody else. So it wouldn't endanger your tax status to sell that property and have that a clean raised lot for a potential new owner to come in and build their business. I know it's, I know that's a, an interesting scenario, but that would be something that would be talked about and decided upon and saying, yeah, that would, that would really interest a group of potential buyers and here's what that could offer. That would be something there where Ryan talked about the effectiveness, the efficient, and you, making the most efficient use of taxpayers' dollars. So that we're enhancing what could go on over at that city.
Okay. Other questions? That you picked up for over the week?
I had, I had somebody talk to me about possibly advertising to get people to come into the, to that district and buy, buy the building. And also starting like call centers or things like that. He just threw that out. I'm just letting you guys know what I've been hearing in the community.
Yeah, again, to, to sell the building and how that happens and how to attract potential suitors, buyers. I mean, we can, we can, just like a home, Brett, can market the heck out of this. There's, there's, if there is, you know, not the MLS like residential homes go to, but there's services like that for commercial properties that we can advertise it on and, and, you know, do all those things to try to get people interested in the potential.
Okay. And thinking about that, you know, it, it is some prime property there, right on 212. It's got the cables, the wiring to bring in something. And so, that's the things that that committee is, is really looking at now and I think it's a real plus, so.
Might be interesting to ask one of those internet companies if they wanted to put a building on there and now they own the the ins and the outs and what are they going to charge to other companies? You know, there's all sorts of potential workings that you know.
Okay, anything else?
Next topic?
Yeah, you have about three minutes. I'm going to give you, okay, I, yeah, I will give you 10 minutes. Sorry. I might actually give you 15.
John and Jeff? I don't know if you have access to email, but I emailed you what I'm hearing now.
Thank you.
You can see it. So the last work session we did, we talked about numbers and things like that. There were a couple of questions, clarifications that you wanted me to go through. Really, I'll, I'll break it down into a couple, just a couple of them. Wanted to see what an athletics field, an activities field, I call it activities because nowadays it's not a football field, right? It's athletics and activities. So, it has all that, what that standalone component is. And then also I did, we had a meeting with both principals, athletic director, activities director, and Dale to go through the program again. So to look at what a new building would contain and what are the absolute needs and, and necessities of that building. So, what's different between, let's look at this sheet first. And I'm looking at the one that says bold planning scenarios on the top of it. The difference on here on the first two columns, the new pre-K 12 building and the addition of Olivia, that the difference is if you go over the quantities row and down, those numbers were 120,000 square feet and 143,000 square feet plus. They're now 126 and 149. So the building grew by 6,000 square feet by talking to the administration. That's why I don't talk to them.
Excuse me, Ryan. Is that the one colored sheet that we're talking on?
No, it's, it's the less colored sheet. Two, there's two colors on it, but planning scenarios. So, the, the program is, is, is set. There is the, I think the biggest question came for you, Melissa, about gym space and talking about what that looked like. The, the building that I had programmed, which is still in here, is a 2.5 station gym. So that's, that's two full-size basketball courts that are next to each other. That's why it's called a half, because the third court, which would typically be a varsity court, would go perpendicular. So you, you would have stands that close onto that varsity court. But when the stands are retracted, the bleachers retracted, you have two full-size courts to use. This, this is bigger than any one box gym that you have by, by a little bit. I think the Olivia gym itself is around 11,000 square feet. So this is bigger than that. And Derek has some, some hesitancy with that. If, 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 if we build a new building and Bird Island and Olivia are gone, that won't work. He's, he's straight up saying that. So this, this relies on at some point a wellness component to add at least another gym facility. Or we plan on that and the wellness component from the hospital adds other stuff. Daycares, fitness centers, you know, all those different health classrooms, things like that. So that's yet to be determined. But again, trying to not overbuild in the preparation for what's to come and the anticipation for what's to come is, is kind of that teeter-totter that we're on right now. So, new pre-K 12 building is the first column. Again, I have the addition to Olivia on there just for comparison. You guys are going to get asked about that a lot, right? What's the comparison if you just fixed Olivia to, to match? That's why that's there. And then the 500-seat auditorium component and the athletic activities component as well as standalone items. As I was driving here, I realized I made a mistake. If you were to, and that's on the next page, but if you were to add the activities and athletic field as a component, we don't need the million two that's shown in the new building. So, that's something I'm aware of and I'll keep track of it. I'll let you know where that is in the next. So then, what we get to is the next sheet, the colorful sheet. Here's all the tax impacts from all the different scenarios that you could possibly put together with this set of options. Again, the first four columns are dealing with the Olivia site. The middle column, I say is the baseline. That's building a new school out of the hospital. That's the baseline. That's the baseline. And then the, the three columns to the, uh, to the right of that are adding other components into it. The auditorium, the athletic field, and then the auditorium and the athletic field. So kind of the least costly item is all the way to the left, the most expensive costly referendum is all the way to the right. So, um, just to draw your eye to the blue line that's going horizontal across there at a hundred thousand dollars. That's pretty close to your average home value in the district. It might be just a titch more, hundred and, hundred and ten thousand, but that's pretty close. So what these are, are the tax impacts per month on that home. So if you look at the baseline, just the building out by the hospital, seventeen dollars and forty three cents per month as an increase to their tax. That's for fifty one million, seven hundred and seventy five thousand. And then, then as you go left and right, it's different options.
Still less than what I pay monthly. Annually, it's still less than what I pay monthly, myself.
The, the disparity between the, the farthest left and the farthest right of six, six dollars. Six dollars between, and again, all the different options and it really just look at the dollar values, forty three point six million versus sixty four point three million is a disparity of six dollars a month on that average home. Now you can see as you look at the, the estimated market values as they go up. It is not a, a linear scale. So doubling one hundred thousand is not what two hundred thousand is. So if you have a home that's two hundred thousand, it's actually a little more than that. That it's, it's an exponential scale. So the more, the more property value you have, the, the higher that gets quicker. So that's a lot to, to absorb in, in a quick amount of time. Initial thoughts, questions? If someone were to ask me on a referendum, what's too much? We would typically go as a starting point, not knowing anything about anything, twenty dollars a month on the average home. That seems to be, you get over that, it gets, that's tough. You get under that, I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but it's people understand that, I guess, that they're, but we've, we've passed plenty to go that are much more than that on the average. So.
So Ryan, you're assuming the cost on the land of, for the hospital athletic field auditorium, what are you costing that at?
You can see on the, on, on that, that planning scenarios sheet, um, the far two right hand columns, eighteen acres at twenty thousand an acre.
All right, that's fine. Really happy. So that was the thing in the land, you know, he's going down here.
There's a positive and negative about having these work sessions open to the public and everybody paying attention, right? They know what your plan. They know you're, you're kinda.
That's ridiculous.
And I, I do think the hospital was right around. So
I think so.
That the value you can see, yeah, for farm value, I would probably, that value is probably around six, six or seven, I'm guessing, maybe? Yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah.
They probably bought it at twenty back when they did that, because they wanted to recoup their money out of what they paid for back then, which they don't. Yeah. Land value goes down, so.
But you're comparing farmland value to commercial. So you got two, you got apples and oranges. And so what you're saying is very true, but what's the market for? We're gonna.
Large land are smart. They're, they're wealthy for a reason. They know where growth is gonna happen. They know how it's gonna happen. They, they're very intuitive with that.
Jeff, you had something?
Yeah. Either Mike or Ryan, maybe you can answer this. What is the average cost throughout the state of commercial land of that size?
I think, I think you're, that's all over the board.
Depending where you live.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just let me, I'm at a, I'm at a friend's house and he's a commercial real estate expert. Let me yell down if I can get his attention. Hold on.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Um, I'm trying to think. So we're working with Anandale. Maybe this is all public, so I can say this, right? Cause it's a school district. They bought eighty acres for a new high school site. And I wanna say that they paid between a million eight and two million, no, five, somewhere in there. In Anand. That was, it's kind of, kind of in the city of Anandale, kind of like what you guys are having, but it's not farmland, not a, well, a section of the farmland, but I mean, you can see it's, Anandale's not a, you know, metropolis. It's.
That's a very growing city though, with St. Cloud up there.
But you can see the price per acres.
Sure.
Yeah.
But the land that's actually out there that we're looking at is owned by the hospital or a farmer that owns land or own there?
Farmer that owns the land.
So, so they, the obviously different regions of the state are command differently. In a town like yours, that's fifty cents a foot. Uh, that's how they'll cost it. It might be on the high side, but it could be reasonable. Was the, was the, was the, was the large answer I got from my local expert.
Sorry, and I just did the math on the Anandale one and that's twenty two five. An acre. So.
Oh, so you're just slightly above fifty cents per square foot there.
But like Jeff said, it's grow, it's a, it's a more growing town than, yeah.
Yep.
About three minutes left.
Okay, we got things to look at now. And I think this is what we're looking for is, is some different options. And and so, you know, you can really have some different things to think about here now and look at and and then we've just, we discussed the, uh, working with the hospital. We spent a lot of time with that and I think they're ready to move forward with that too, if we are. And so, um, so I think that's a real plus to be able to connect with them. And they could really offer a lot to the district, I think, with their curriculum offerings or facilities offering and all that. But that's, that's all being discussed right now. So that's that's in the hands of a lot of people. But for tonight now, any more questions were, and then Jill is trying to push us along here.
My job.
Doing her job. Any more?
Yes, I've got a question.
Yep.
Uh, Ryan, it's the last meeting. I thought you said something about we need to plan for, I'm gonna use the word standalone unit, not necessarily planning at the high school already. Uh, hospital's gonna be with us. Is that pretty much still true, right?
Yeah, I mean, that, that program of, of that first column is, is set to do. It's with the exception of having two and a half station gym as opposed to what you have in your current Olivia building. Again, I don't know. I mean, it's, would be comparable, but not, right? With what you have is your big gym over here and you got the smaller gym. So you'd be close to that size. But.
So I think, are you asking John that last time we met, we said, we kind of came to the conclusion that the district should focus on K twelve, a pre K twelve building period. And right, now you're saying, John?
So this is, this is the cover of that?
Yep. And so that's what, that's what that first column is basically. A standalone building, all pre K twelve. The only, the only thing there it says it's on the hospital land. But as far as anything else, it's nothing, it's not connected. Yeah, you're right, John.
All right. Any other questions?
Not a question, but a statement. I have a bunch of photos I was gonna go through with facilities to show you what all of the different things kind of are. It's in a PDF, so I'll just email that.
Perfect.
And you can look at that and.
I mentioned that to, to Ryan, this was came out of our last workshop session. I think uh, that would be good to take a look at and maybe on our next meeting, we can spend a little bit of time on that. Um, but that's something that I think Barbara did with our, with that exploratory committee. She took them through an exercise of different pictures of rooms and things, which really got you thinking, you know, what do you see in that picture? And it was really, she really did a good job and really got the committee looking outside and saying, hey, that's a possibility and this is a possibility. And not that it was related to a school or anything, but it's just business and facilities. And what do you see in that picture? It was a neat exercise. I thought should have a
You just took all of your time.
Yep. Um, so I just, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm being, I'm trying for this, obviously, I'm sorry, this should have been probably two work sessions. Because I feel like Ryan and, and Mike have gotten shorted on time. That was necessary for them. So.
We have November ninth.
Okay, okay. So I do need to stop this work session so that I can, um, switch around and go to the next meeting so that I can get everybody headed. So thank you all for attending.